Welcome, everybody, to the Sheldon Planning Commission on January 24th. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda as it stands.
Is that moved?
Seconded.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Dick. Any discussion? I was only going to add that Dean and I had a brief conversation with Alec Webb after the Select Board hearing, and I wasn't sure if he was actually going to make it here for...
I think he may, but I also think he may be planning to come and to talk later when you get to planning matters and it's the update on the plan, since it would be relating to an agenda item, and I think he didn't want to ask to have the agenda reordered, because he didn't want to do that.
Sure.
But...
Yeah, I guess I would just make a note that when...
I think he plans to be here.
Yeah, I mean, if he plans to be here, that wherever we are, it might make sense to just have that discussion, just to be mindful of time, depending on when that is. Yeah. All right, well, outside of, with that consideration, all in favor of the agenda as stands?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Then, next is approval of the minutes from December 13th, and that was in the... Well, I had that in front of me.
I don't know where I put it.
I absolutely had that in front of me.
Copies of the minutes?
Yeah.
They were at the back of the package.
Oh, they were, yeah, they were the separate... They were a separate edition in the package, yeah. I mean, I know I didn't have any comments or anything on it, but... So I suppose a motion to approve the minutes?
I will approve minutes.
All right.
But it's January 10th, not approaching December 13th.
You're right, sorry, I was looking at that. January 10th, thank you. Okay.
Seconded.
Yeah, moved by Stephen, seconded by Dick. Any discussion? I did not have any discussion.
Yeah.
All right. Well, okay, good minutes, all in favor of the minutes as listed? Aye? Okay. So now...
So I was absent, is that...
Oh, then it wouldn't... That's true.
Yeah.
If Kate was absent, we don't have a quorum on approving the minutes.
She was absent, and she doesn't vote, then you don't have...
Then we don't.
...one of them move to get them approved if she was absent, but she still votes, because...
No, I'm happily, I'm okay voting, I just, I wasn't sure I was allowed to.
You're not prevented?
Okay, yeah, look, they look good. I read you in the mail. Yeah, it looks like you had an interesting evening.
We had an interesting evening.
Okay.
Okay. So then, that was approval of the minutes. Any disclosures relating to potential conflicts of interest on items on tonight's agenda?
Nope.
Seeing none? Open to the public?
Just looking to see what was interesting.
Yeah, well, there's that. Nobody from the public at this time, so we can move on to zoning matters. The first item was considering the Housing Subcommittee proposal around accessory apartments.
Just to interject, Pam Brainin is downstairs. She's working at the food shelf, and I know she plans to come up when that's done, or when she's done, but I know she's in the building, so if you want me to run down and grab her and say, "Hey, Pam," she intends to be here for this discussion, or at least as much of it as she can.
Yeah, well, then we could either, I mean...
It's a phone-based one?
It's really, it's, there's, it's not like there's a big crowd tonight.
Like your footsteps.
Okay. Well, if that's her, great, if not, then we could potentially...
Maybe they go into a different room.
Start on...
Nope, it's Alec.
Yeah, all right.
And he was Pam, too.
Wow. Hello.
Hello.
So you have your choice.
All right. Well, should we, based on what we were talking about with the agenda before, since technically public comment time would be about now, anyway, we can talk about the Shelburne Farms discussion relating to the plan first, and then we'll get into zoning matters on the Housing Subcommittee, if that's okay? All right. Right. So regarding Shelburne Farms, I don't know if you would be able to better articulate the situation.
Well, I might, I might just tee things up by saying that Alec and I met, and since Alan and I, Alec and I have not talked since about 5:15, he doesn't know that the maps that we talked are on the computer, so if you wanted to make reference to them, and maybe just let you speak.
Sure.
Yeah.
The process has been going on the last couple days.
And would you mind grabbing the mic?
Or you can just have it standing next to you if you...
Yeah.
Or you can sit with it.
Yeah, sit with it, or, there you go.
So after the Select Board hearing...
I had a chance to visit with Jason and Dean, and I'm impressed and supportive of the plan, but as I was looking at the maps, which I hadn't really focused in on, and I'm embarrassed to say until this late date, but it showed conservation areas around Shelburne Pond, and then Shelburne Farms being a conservation area as well, and I was starting to think that a natural area around Shelburne Pond is really different than the types of mixed uses and more intensive uses at Shelburne Farms, and if the plan was approved as is, would that have some impact on the farm's ability to continue the types of mixed uses that are, you know, make it what it is today? So, I guess, I kind of, I mapped out the three options, you know, one is just to say, "The plan's great, and go forward and continue to operate Shelburne Farms under a master land use plan, approved under the rural mixed-use PUD," which is what we've been doing and would continue to do, which is entirely consistent with the goals and objectives that are stated in the plan. The second possibility would be to amend the language on page 23, just to make it clear that some limited development in conservation areas is permitted, you know, whereas I'm assuming that there'd be no development allowed in some areas around Shelburne Pond, in those conservation areas. And then the third might be the, which is probably not realistic with the timeframe, you know, it may be the next planning cycle, but to consider the idea of having Shelburne Farms be designated as a protected area, the whole of Shelburne Farms, as opposed to three-quarters of it being shown as conservation, but to really capture the idea, which I think the Natural Resources Committee and the Planning Commission is trying to do, which is to say, "Look into the future of Shelburne Farms really as a whole, should be conserved and protected as a cultural and agricultural and educational resource." So that was the process I'd gone through, and I think I'm leaning towards the option A, just as being more the most realistic, and, but putting those other two on the table, you know, if there was an amendment or some process for making some additions or edits to the current draft, that some of those other changes might be considered.
Yeah, and the main thing with this was around, we as a commission had a discussion around the land use map, and the general land use map shows conservation area as a generic concept, and then there was a more detailed map, it's on page 31, but that took those conservation areas and broke them into subcategories, like easements, association lands, and also conserved areas. And, yeah, so this is the main planning areas map where all of...
This is like a colored version of what I believe you just...
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
And the red is the boundary that...
Could be, you know, at some point, you have Shelburne, so in Europe, like in Italy, the national park could include a village, or, you know, farms, or tourism sites, and that's, so that's more, what's happening at Shelburne Farms is more analogous to that than, you know, the natural areas conserved around Shelburne Pond, they're just so different.
This, this is the map that has some deeper explanation of what the green area is shown here, but are also shown on, in terms of making edits, the composite future land use map is maybe the most important, because it's supposed to be the synthesis of all of the stuff, and so it has all of this green that, as Alec points out, it's kind of, you know, it's not the same as the areas, or at least parts of it are not the same as what you see over here. But back to, to this, you have the planning areas, you have the conserved.
Dean, what's the purple part on the map?
What specifically, or Alec?
That's the area, so there's, that's the area that's outside of the, so there's a portion of Shelburne Farms that's under kind of a traditional conservation easement with Vermont Land Trust, so the purple is the area that's not subject to that. So the idea was, the traditional easement kind of protects the main vistas as you're driving through the property, but the board, at the time, they granted the conservation easements, wanted to keep some areas out for potential limited development in case the farm's financial situation required that.
So maybe white, it's not part of Shelburne Farms, the purple, as you call it...
The whites are the private, so it's kind of like the European model, where there's the private-public ownership at the farm, so the white areas are, they're not totally accurate, but are the private residential leaseholds within the farm.
So these are the inholdings, this is part of Shelburne Farms but not subject to easement, and the green areas inside the red are part of Shelburne Farms and subject to easement, and the thing that, what it really reflects, this is what the current plan shows, which is essentially just those in Shelburne Farms under some easement.
Yeah, so that, that's the, so under the current zoning reg, so the, I don't know if you have a pointer thing, but...
Yeah, so this is both the current zoning regs and the current future land use.
So the dark areas are the conservation easement areas, and everything else is the rest of the farm.
Yeah.
So, in, like, terms of actual, what's, what's on there, what's, what's in the purple right now, and what's in the green?
In the purple, so in the purple would be the inn and gardens, the farm barn, some of the, the private inholdings, actually, well, those were separately, but...
And the green are specifically fields?
Not on that map, I don't think. That's, that's open land and forest land. I mean, the, we're going to be coming in sooner than later, we have our, with an updated master land use plan under the PUD that should have been in here sooner than that, but we can, that'll have much more detail in terms of...
And when this, when this discussion first came up, the, the concern was mostly that if, like, these maps are pretty high-level, and Alex's concern was that if we have on the mainland use map this big blob of green that says conservation, even though there's an asterisk and says, "Look at this other map," it shows an additional breakdown, where we called it association lands, the ones that aren't necessarily conservation lands, but they're part of that area. Initially, hearing this, my thought was that what's on the map is what's on the map, but as you get into the details of deeds and actual property lines and that sort of thing, that's what would carry, so there wouldn't be a concern of somebody saying, "Well, but on the map that says that it's conserved, therefore, no, you can't build on it," that we have more detailed rules that would supersede that high level. And that's kind of where this conversation went from there, is recognizing that where we are in terms of getting the plan approval, there's been an idea floated that as things like this come up, we could put together an amendments package for some period down the line, that we collect all of these things, and then we work through them and just make an amendment to the plan that has since been adopted. Or do we try and add some clarifying language now to really solidify this, so that there's really no confusion? That's really where this all started.
But if you go back to the goal and objective statements, they're all consistent with what makes, I mean, they make sense, and they're, they're not restrictive, I just was worried that if some future Select Board or Planning Commission said, "Well, no, that's, that says conservation area on the map, just, and that we're going to treat it like the area around Shelburne Pond," you know, which means it would be much more restrictive than would be appropriate at Shelburne Farms.
So would somehow a reference to the agreement, wouldn't that satisfy the...
But I think it's, I think I've made a mountain out of a molehill in a way, in that if you look at the goals and objectives and the framework, everything that the farm wants to do fits within those, so it was just, is more, it just doesn't make sense to me to have the farm shown in the same land use category as a natural area around Shelburne Pond, but I don't think it's worth getting hung up on that, as long as there's general understanding with the town that, you know, we're not going to, that they're not going to be treated in the same way, even though you could, there's nothing to say that, I mean, they are shown the same, and there's nothing differentiating them in the cup, in the text right now.
And ultimately, it would be the master plan document, PUD, that's...
That would govern, I think, so...
That would ultimately govern the whole thing.
So can Dean, can you do a synopsis for us on the, what that is, just so we know?
This is just the policy.
Which is? The master plan, just so we can get a general idea of what it is, and then we can, you know, we should at least know what we're talking about.
I mean, what it is is a document that's created as part of this PUD, this special PUD designation, that makes it clear that there's an understanding about what's going to happen at Shelburne Farms, and that it kind of avoids having serious discussions about things every time anybody wants to make a little change, so establishes the framework, there's agreement, and then subsequently, as long as there's an application that's consistent with that approved plan, then the approval process is simpler. The way that the zoning regs were written, they, and they, they were written, boy, 25 years ago, a long time ago, and then they were tweaked 10 years ago or so to incorporate some new things, but the bottom line is that we've essentially been waiting for the farms to come up with this new master plan, which would then be submitted to the DRB, and also to the HBDRC, and also to the Natural Resources Committee, because the regs are written in a way that says those two groups also have a say on the document. But then, once the master plan has been approved by the DRB, it's, it functions like an umbrella approval for the farms as a whole, and like I said, so that subsequent, specific applications have a simpler path to approval.
Basically, yes, it's like the town plan, except it's a Shelburne Farms plan, so that we have our own kind of internal zoning areas, you know, so the intensive uses around the farm barn and the inn, and conserve farmland and forest land, ecological areas, that type of thing.
Many set of zoning regulations, just, just for the farm.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, and that the town plan is more, you know, global policy document, so, but what would you like to see in the future? I mean, if, if you are comfortable with maybe option A for now, what would, I wasn't clear if your preference going down the road would be B or C, or something else?
I think C probably.
Okay.
Because that's really more, it's, Shelburne Farms, you know, the, it's a protected area, but within it, there are all these mixed uses, so that, I think there's, protected area is kind of the best category that I could think of at this point.
Well, and we think of resource, we think of resource protection right now as, as natural resources, and less so scenic resources, you know, I mean, we're, it's, we need to do some work on that, and I just loved the analogy you made of the Italian, the special Italian village, you know, you can imagine exactly what you're thinking about, you know, where there's, it's, it's a blend of, you know, the natural, scenic, the cultural, historic, you know, and that's kind of what Shelburne Farms is, is.
Yeah.
And, you know, frankly, the museum is a little bit, too, in a different way, you know, so...
Yeah, and the museum is a district right now, or a district goes a little bit beyond the museum, so down the road, it seems like recognizing Shelburne Farms as a unique agricultural and cultural area of the town would, probably would make sense, and the PUD, historic mixed-use PUD kind of already has recognized that to a certain degree, so...
And Alec, that's really to differentiate it from the other conserved lands that are just conserved, just in their natural state.
Because it's really, yeah, if that's what people are, you know, it's a, yes, it's not just a natural area, it's, it's a, yeah, it's a heavily used cultural resource and agricultural resource, unlike, and it's, and you have all those tensions, Dean shared a great piece on the Lake District in England, which is another kind of parallel thing, but you have these, you know, the pro-agriculture, pro, you know, anywhere, you know, people are concerned that agriculture is hurting the natural, the natural characteristics there, and you have these, all these tensions, and that, we have all those same tensions at the farm, but it's, so it's not, you want to try to keep them in balance, but it's very different than managing a natural area around a pond.
With, so the master plan hasn't gone through that process yet to...
I've run a, no, we have a very outdated one, but we've got one that we've been using internally, and so that's the next, I'm gonna, out in a way, I was letting, whatever the expression is, the perfect, be in the way of getting, you know...
That one, yeah.
Yeah, whatever, you know, so we just gotta, I think, it's kind of like this, we've got to get something out there and approved, and we can keep amending it as we go along, in reality, but it's, what we have drafted in our board is approved a couple of years ago, because we need that just internally, is, is pretty good, but it's not perfect, Dean had a lot of comments, and I just hadn't been able to absorb them, and...
So as a path forward, if, if for now, option A is reasonable with an idea that once that plan is in, is something that can be officially referenced, then we could get to a point where we could call that a protected area, or a note to say, "reference that master plan for additional detail," or something like that?
That makes sense, yeah. Can we say that now, as an amendment, right now, knowing that that master plan's going to be a future?
Oh, yeah.
Well, you can, you can pose anything you want. I think... One of the issues is, is timing, right? If, if option A is, "Don't do anything right now," but that doesn't prevent you from doing something in the future. Option B, you know, maybe doing something now, although it raises the question of, "Does it have an impact on the adoption schedule? Will the current plan expire for a little bit before the new one?" And option C is clearly going to take some time to figure out, to sort out. If you wanted to, you know, expand B to have, include language in it that makes reference to the plan, it's always a dangerous thing when you make reference to another plan that's going to be updated, and then you say, "As amended," well, you never know how it could be amended, so you're kind of turning your responsibilities over to someone else, that's just kind of the, the bottom line with it, but you could, you could work on that language, and if you come up with that language between now and the 22nd, I'm sorry, the 12th of February, then that's something that the Select Board could consider, but then there's the question of, "Well, what happens if they say, 'Yeah, let's do this'?" And it raises the question of, "Will the board just say, 'This is so minor, we just are going to incorporate it, and we're going to improve the plan,'" and that would raise a question in my mind whether or not it's fully conforming with the adoption procedures, or they would say, "Okay, let's make these additions, and we'll warn another hearing, and we'll go for a couple of weeks without a plan," and the plan, instead of being adopted on February 12th, will be adopted, you know, in the middle of March, something like that, with that, with that, that new language is in it.
So we couldn't make the language right now and have it become adopted February 12th, then, if we, even if we wanted to, even if we approved it?
So, well, it's the...
In our group, right now.
The Select Board just had a meeting, so the Select Board, it's, the document is in the Select Board's hands, you can't really, you know, unless they had a special meeting, they couldn't agree with your idea in order to then say, "We will warn the hearing and try to minimize the amount of time," because two things have to happen, the hearing has to be warned on the new proposal, and that new proposal has to be something that you can pick up, and that someone could walk in off the street. So the, I'm looking at my calendar here, you know, we are, we're on the 24th, where if that language was settled, and if the Select Board was meeting here in the room with you, they could say, "Okay, let's warn this new version," and essentially replace the one that has been circulating so far, and get a legal ad published, and get the sign posted in three places, you could still stick to that original deadline, you could still make the 12th.
And that, and that's kind of where I was coming from, and Alec, I think what you were working to accommodate as well, is that, through option A, is to say that as long as we're aware of this, and this is a in-good-faith kind of thing, because I don't think you're, between now and getting that master plan through, it's not like you have things that are on the table that could create...
Yeah, and I had a chance to talk to Gail Albert after we talked, Dean, and just to get a sense of where she, her thinking was with the committee, and they're not, they look at it more as a protected area than, in the European sense of the word, than a natural area, so I'm not, I'm not concerned at this point about that.
Yeah, it strikes me as the pieces are in place, that there won't be any conflicts, but it is something that we'd want to be aware of, so that if we do this, or when we do an amended package, if that's how we go about it, then we could add something to clarify that, just to eliminate future conflicts.
And we can catch it the next time around, five years now, or something like that.
Right.
It would also be really helpful when you begin your master planning part, you know, the update, if you could think about how you would like to be represented in the plan.
Yeah.
That would be really helpful to us, because maybe there's a better way to do it than we're thinking of right now, because this is kind of a little off the cuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And maybe it's, maybe it's along, I don't know, maybe it's along the lines of Shelburne Farms becomes a special district, you know, like the museum, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, and that'll take more, I mean, maybe we're starting right on time for the next update.
Right. That's right. Pretty much.
So I think the bottom line is, everybody's on your side, like, none of us would ever want to do anything that would, you know, we all say the farm is this huge asset, we never want to do anything to jeopardize it, it's just a question of what's the best, you know, means.
Yep, yep.
You know, could we, if we wanted to, I think, just based on this map, it sounds like, because there's a legal agreement set in place already that, that would supersede anything that we show on a map.
Yeah, and the other thing is, in the zoning process, the other place to pick this up, so, because, it's, I feel badly about taking a couple hours of your time, not the commission time, just kind of working this through, but...
Yeah, oh, that's it, it's a good discussion to have, and I think, yeah, I thank you for bringing it to our attention, and if, if you're okay with that, it sounds like we could move forward with option A, but with an idea of, as things unfold, incorporating option C when we get to an amendment process.
Do we need to do anything, Jason, to, to agree to option A, or is, is it, is it just what it, what it is right now, already?
I mean, my view is, that's just how it is, is that, I mean...
The do-nothing approach.
Well, it's, it's happening, it's, we're live their second hearing, and they'll vote to hopefully approve the plan.
If they can incorporate a change with your update, that would be, that would take a lot of time, everybody. If, as soon as the update is ready, that we could make that change.
Maybe by then they'll have, the Lake District will have figured out a solution that you can copy.
Yeah, well, we could, I suppose, share, and this is wording that Dean helped with, and it does actually, it references the master plan in there, I mean, we could share that with the same kind of approach, saying if, if that would be help, if that's an edit they could incorporate, they could do that, but if not, we wouldn't be pushing it.
Yeah, I mean, my, with this whole process and just recognizing timelines, my, I think I just have an inherent resistance to introducing any change, that somebody might say, "Oh, yeah, well, let's do that," and then it ends up adding a month or two to adoption. But, but then I don't know, just as a, for... But then I don't know, just as a, for crossing Ts and dotting Is and stuff, if there's, if it's, like, in our discussion, I wasn't seeing any major red flags that would say, somebody could come in and say, no, that map has priority over all of this other detail. Like, to me, that becomes not an issue, because that's not really something that could be done. It would, like, somebody could create noise about it potentially, but legally.
Yeah, plus there were some small inaccuracies in it that I don't think, again, are worth, because it's, it's not going to impact anything, really.
Right, it seems very low risk to me to just, the do-nothing approach followed by an amendment as the master plan comes along, so that document exists that we can reference. If, if that's an agreeable thing.
It was me.
All right. Good stuff, then. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Alec.
Is that an extra copy of your, okay, I was just going to give it to Mary Ann so she could have it.
And then with that, we can move to accessory apartments.
Well, one I know.
Some of them are old, but they've been doctored for.
For this, huh?
Yes.
That's what I was wondering.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So, yeah, accessory housing.
I mean, maybe I'll set the stage by saying there is a memo having to do with the two zoning topics. The first part of that memo refers to the discussions that have been going on, having to do with accessory apartments. And two of the four of you here tonight met with the committee, the Housing Subcommittee, and there was a resolution or a consensus on an idea that would be incorporated, and that's what I forwarded, but I also included in the memo some language, slight modifications that reflected something that's been discussed previously and I think wouldn't really change what the Housing Subcommittee would have sent you had they talked about that. But to be more specific, I'm just going to pull that up and then turn things over to Pam to see if she has any additional comments, but basically, the concept that we've been working with is that we're going to make accessory apartments a permitted use rather than having two categories where one is permitted and one is conditional. The category that historically has been conditional is when it's more than one bedroom, so two bedrooms and more than 30%, so up to 50% of the size. And something that the committee discussed and has agreed to is the idea of a cap. And so, the way to make that come into the regulations would be to modify the definition of accessory apartment to say, a dwelling unit with a total floor area of 1,500 square feet or smaller, so that's the first part, having to do with size. And then, as far as this idea of making everything a permitted use, we would do something like what's shown in the box here. This is, this is an example from one of the zoning districts where in the residential district, accessory apartments are listed as a use, and it would just be to add a five or replace the three with a five and strike this language at the end, which is something that's only there because of the conditional use, which would no longer apply. The language that's highlighted, the gold highlighted language, is there to address this idea that someone could put an accessory apartment in a new building, or they could put it in an existing building, or they could put it in a building that is already there, but would be expanded slightly. That's the bottom line of what was in the memo, and maybe Pam, let you say anything that you want to from your standpoint as the chair of the committee, but that was all I had to prepare.
Thanks. I need to do this. I guess the one thing I wanted to say was to thank both Dick and Stephen for coming to our committee meeting and participating in the discussion. I felt like it was some, some good back and forth and I felt that the committee as a whole was pretty much behind the idea of having a maximum square footage, but not really dealing with a minimum. And then the other part of our big discussion was about whether or not to have the accessory apartment be attached or detached, and we spent a lot of time talking about that. And the committee, at the end of the discussion, really didn't, wanted to consider both of those as part of the zoning amendment. It doesn't matter whether it's an attached accessory or a detached. And I don't really have much more to add. I know that we didn't, as a committee, we didn't, like, flesh out the exact language. This was, Dean and I had a few emails back and forth about, you know, some of the definition, but the general gist of it was that during the committee, what we discussed was the maximum and whether or not to have an attached or detached. And I don't know if Stephen or Dick want to add anything more to.
I think that's a good summary.
And what was the conclusion about attached or detached?
That either one.
Either one is okay?
Yes.
In reading through this, I only had one question that I wasn't, I don't know if I was remembering poorly or not, but when this first came up, we were discussing the difference between an accessory apartment and a duplex, and the difference being that the duplex was one part needed to be owner occupied?
Accessory apartment.
The accessory apartment, so.
Duplex can be owned by someone who lives in Florida and who rents both.
Both sides are out.
But accessory apartment, the owner of the property has to live in one or the other.
And it's enabled by statute.
Yeah, that's.
By.
It's, it's the statutory definition.
It's a statute and we can expand or.
Right, but the, no one can be denied the ability to have, yeah, whereas a duplex is not something that is, you can have that not allowed, right, under zoning?
Yeah, central to the idea of an accessory apartment, even though a community can be more relaxed about it, but central to the idea in Vermont is this, is this concept that by having the owner on the property in one or the other of the units, you're, you have some self policing. It's going to have less impact than a situation where there's no, there's no owner anywhere near necessarily.
And I don't disagree with that at all, this is, some of this might just be devil's advocate, because, so if you, if you had, if you had somebody who owns, owns a house, they added an accessory apartment to it, they're renting out that accessory apartment and then their circumstances changed and they needed to, I mean, in this case, they would have to sell their house in order for the accessory apartment tenants to be able to stay there. They couldn't rent their house and rent the accessory apartment.
Correct.
That's all point, accessory.
Well, that may be a point of the accessory.
Well, that is, what we're talking about is affordable housing.
The owner can be in either, either one, though, in either the apartment or the house.
Right. I mean, I understand the words that are being used, I just, yeah, I'm sure that there are deeper reasons for a lot of that. Okay, so, but we still, we, we do or we do not allow duplexes, then?
Well, duplexes are allowed, but they're allowed under different conditions, so you need a bigger lot, you need more frontage, that's, those are the two main things. So someone would have to have more land than a single-family house would be required to have if they wanted to have a duplex. So that's a feature of Shelburne zoning regulations. We say you can have a duplex, it can be even a permitted use, but you're not going to have it on a lot that's as small as a single-family has, and you're going to have a wider lot. It's going to be more separated from the neighbors than a single-family house would be.
There's reductions in lot sizes per unit.
And I do get that, like, in the more compact areas, you have smaller lot sizes and the idea of adding an accessory apartment and that, that helps in a lot of different ways. We had also talked about some examples of larger houses adding much larger accessory apartments, which I appreciate the 1,500 square foot limit, but so that there would be cases where lot size isn't an issue. So if somebody had a, if somebody had a large lot size and they had built an accessory apartment, do they, is there a path to say, okay, we're going to call this a duplex now?
Yes, there is, if, yeah, if, if someone, if someone was in that situation, we might say to them, well, you know, you're, you're constrained by the zoning regs if you only come in for an accessory apartment permit, but if you come in for a permit for a duplex, then you will get an approval, you could qualify. There are some differences in terms of other regulations that may be a disincentive for them to do that, public buildings requirements and things like that. So they may, they may just say, no, 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 I'm happy. On the other hand, there are more and more developments done, and there's some other towns in Chittenden County where duplexes are much more common than you find them here.
And there were arguments against that as well.
Yeah, the Housing Committee, we have to go back a bit and remember that their concept, their proposal had two main pieces to it originally, and there was an accessory apartment piece and a duplex piece, and the duplex piece was going to require more lifting and so the focus is on accessory for now.
Yeah, we thought that, we thought that the accessory apartment amendment was a little more palatable and could move forward.
Yeah, and I, it was just more a thought that came up and I was just thinking of examples where if you had somebody who was renting an accessory apartment and then the owners of that house, I mean, not to be extremist or anything, but we've got a current situation in this country where a lot of people aren't getting paid or are out of work, and if they end up in a situation where that house gets foreclosed on, it's not just the owner of that house, it would also be the tenants of the accessory apartment. And I'm using that just because that comes to mind, but if that scenario were to come up, you're, like, there aren't protections or anything there, and I know anything could happen anyway to a renter, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of what you're getting at is the question of enforcement, you know, because let's say a, yeah, let's say someone lost their job and they, they had to sell and they put it on the market, well, up until the point, you know, they're there and maybe at some point, they're still trying to sell if the market is tanked and they still have a tenant and, you know, let's say it's a couple that has a student as a renter and, you know, first, the wife goes someplace else because she can work and so she's bringing in an income and the husband is still at home unemployed, but then let's say he has to move, and so then it's raising this question, well, wait a second, the owner's not living there and there's an apartment there, is that, is that a problem? And like I say, it's fundamentally an enforcement issue. If no one else is living in that house, it's, I'm, I don't know that it's a zoning enforcement problem, because they still own it, until they sold it, they still own it.
You can rent the single-family portion of it.
Right.
And leave the accessory vacant.
Right, but if somebody were in that accessory, they would have to then be vacated.
Well, that's the benefit, I guess, of having an accessory or.
What I'm saying though is.
I'm not saying that this is enough to be a showstopper, it was more just the scenario.
But if this was happening, you know, I think that you, you would, you know, unless something was going, a neighbor was complaining and saying, there's, you know, they've moved away and, and there's still that, that crazy tenant there, you know, the town's, town's not even going to know it.
When accessories started, you had to be related. It wasn't, it wasn't optional, so if you didn't have a relative to stay in that house, it was empty.
So what about somebody who goes to Florida for the winter? What is, how is owner occupancy defined?
Trying to think of what.
This one we don't talk about.
They would have to be living here for, for more than six months of the year.
That's usually not how it works, they're not usually trying to establish their Vermont residency. They're moving in Florida.
Yeah, I was just thinking of Florida, they're usually trying to spend six months and one day in Florida so they can get away from the high taxes.
Right, so that's not, that's usually not.
So are they considered, are they considered owner occupied?
Well, they're not, they're, they're probably, no, no, they're not, because they're doing all the things they can do and need to do to be clear to the tax authorities and governing authorities that they're residents of Florida, not residents of Vermont. And so, they're not residing in that, they're residing, their residence is Florida, their primary residence is Florida.
Interesting thing is they don't, they claim residency in Florida and claim they lived there for six months, but rarely do. They usually live here more.
But if they've lived here more and they weren't a resident of Florida, they were a resident of Vermont, and they left for five months of the year and they had an accessory apartment, people lived there, they rented to them, would they be able to rent their own house for that five months they were gone?
No, not legally, not at this point.
Not under, not under these regulations.
But if they have family there. Well, sometimes, like Essex says that someone has to be on the beat.
I think it's, it's hard to argue that you're resident in a space that someone else is paying to rent, right? It's just kind of a, on its face, basic, common sense type of response. If it's vacant, if they're not renting it, then it becomes more of a challenge for the town to us or that they're not living there, even though they're not physically present there. But if they're renting it to someone else and that someone else is renting it for five straight months, it's.
Or house-sitting. I mean, I would think that, you wouldn't want a vacant building, really, I mean, if somebody's not going to be there for five months, we shouldn't discourage people having a house sitter and who knows if they're actually paying to house sit or not, I guess we couldn't, we couldn't tell.
Well, if they've moved, if they're, if they have a house sitter for five months and they're planning to come back and they're, and they have no other place that's legally their residence, then I think they get to.
Then they are the resident.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not a problem.
And you make a good point, that it's more, it's around enforcement at that point. Like, there's always going to be extenuating circumstances, so it's a degree to which enforcement would happen.
Right, a disgruntled neighbor or something, we'd call them out.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Yeah, were there any, any other points or questions?
I had one point, or I had two points, actually. Just, Judith and I were sitting around at our place and we were saying, you know, that's about 1,200 square feet in, you know, the main part of it, and you could really have a two-bedroom house in 1,200 square feet pretty easily and comfortably. So maybe this 1,500 square feet is too high an upper limit and that maybe we're, we're really encouraging people to, to put, you know, more of a full-blown house in there, which would be called two bedrooms, but could easily accommodate three and, you know, maybe four if you squeeze it in. And so, I'm, I'd be good with lowering that upper limit to 1,200 square feet instead of 1,500 square feet, so that the intent of having that house, that accessory apartment subsidiary to the main building is, is clear, that it's not.
Well, it still needs to be 50% of the habitable floor space of the original building, right?
Right.
I would say it included.
Yeah, and for 10.3.
Yeah, it says not more than 50% of the total habitable of the original dwelling, so it seems like not everybody would be able to get up to 1,500 square feet. I liked it, Stephen, as a provision, because we're not, we're not, we're counting things like garages, we live in a place where, you know, it's very nice to have a garage, and also decks and stuff like that, so.
You couldn't possibly do a garage with that.
A garage isn't planned for human occupancy, so I wouldn't be.
Well, but, no, but it says here, up in 2110.1, it says, the total shall consist of the aggregate area of all floors within the apartment, whether or not said areas are designed or used for human occupancy, as well as.
So you're saying a attached garage to, a garage attached to the accessory apartment is the condition that you're worried about?
That's what I'm worried about, yeah.
I think it's included, is it?
I mean, that's what I understood.
Yeah, it would be included.
That's what I understood, the, the increase to reflect was the recognition that something That's what I understood, the, the increase to reflect was the recognition that something like a garage and a deck and a porch, that sort of thing would be included.
I think that's one of, if, if you're in a community where you are expecting some decent percentage of the accessory apartments that are created to also include garages, then yes, that's, that's what justifies a 1,500 square feet as opposed to a 1,200 more readily. Cause I, I mean, you don't need 1,500 square feet. It's a lot of room to live in if you are just living in it and you're not thinking about a place for your car. But if you are thinking about a place for your car.
Well, this, this is interesting because, Kay, I read that exactly the opposite.
Okay.
And I, I think we need to clarify because it, I could, I could see your way too. I read it as, when it says for the purposes, purposes of establishing the floor area of an accessory apartment, I, I inserted in my head, the total of the main house, of the original house shall consist of the aggregate areas of all things like garages and decks and porches. And so then you take a 2,000 square foot house and you put, you know, 500 square feet of decks and 1,000 square foot of a garage, you're all of a sudden at a 3,500 square foot house and you take 50% of that and that's the size of the accessory apartment. So I, I was seeing it as
Less.
With the, the basis that you did it on, but I.
It's within the apartment, well, the words are, this is from my.
Well, we should just be really clear about what we mean.
Yeah.
I saw it that way too at first, the first time I read it. And then I went back in this afternoon and I was, now I'm seeing it the way Dean was talking about it.
Well.
But I didn't think that a garage was clearly part of the dwelling unit.
It would.
So I didn't think it would count.
Well, then maybe we should say excluding garages or something like that, you know?
If.
Cause here, here's what, here's what I'm thinking about. This is something that is, you know, we have aging parents and sort of thinking about how they might possibly come and live with us for part of the year and they're going to need a garage. I mean, you know, there, there's just no way that they can be expected to, you know, clear snow off and that sort of thing anymore. So they're going to need a garage. And so I, that's how I was looking at that because I think with, if, if that were part of the calculation, you know, that would still leave a quite nice sized apartment for them.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
What if we just said with a single bay garage?
Well, they could have a three bay in a little tiny apartment. It's not up to us to say how, the allocation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but some people, the apartment might be more important than the dwelling area.
Not incorporating it as part of the residence.
What really is important and I don't have my, I'm going to get a copy here, is the definition of dwelling unit. The definition that's in here says it's the area within the apartment and that, like I say, is built on the dwelling unit and a garage is not a dwelling unit. If it was not attached, it wouldn't be part of the apartment. It's, it's not where they live. If it was attached, then arguably you could say, yeah, that's part of my apartment. But I don't know that most people would say that that's part of my apartment. That's a garage. But definition.
Well, to use my house as an example, right now we have a two car garage and if my parents in law were to decide to move here and we created an ADU within our house, we would add a third garage bay and the apartment would be on top of all three garage, garages. So it would be exactly that.
It would be in or above?
Above.
Yeah.
We'd have a third garage bay that would be, you know, for them and then there would be, but the apartment would extend across.
So they'd be the upper part of the, of the building, the lower level of which is the garage. I mean, there's some of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me find. You know, it could be as simple as inserting the words excluding any garage or car storage area or anything like that, but I just wanted to.
Or excluding a one bay for the accessory apartment.
Or excluding up to so many square feet.
Build a five bay garage attached to that accessory apartment. Just for that accessory apartment.
Classic car aficionado.
Right.
For something like that. I don't know.
But it is true that if somebody wanted to build it, an accessory building structure just as a garage, there's nothing, they could go ahead and build a whole barn for, for accessory, like for storage of things and that would be allowed under the present zoning regs, right?
I don't know.
It's not, someone says, I want to have another garage. They've already got two, but they want to have another one. They would get a permit or a garage unless they were building coverage territory.
Yeah.
See, but if an accessory apartment is considered a dwelling unit, then what you described you could potentially do would not be possible unless that third garage bay was completely walled off from the other two, which seems impractical. But, I mean, from an external apartment standpoint, if you're renting to somebody else, then you probably would want that segregated anyway.
Yeah. I mean, just from a, in our situation, from a construction standpoint, it would be a standalone thing because.
Right.
Yeah, but.
I mean, I get why our bylaws end up being very complex because you have to effectively account for a lot of these exceptions, but at the same time it like part of the reason for asking some of these questions is what is it that we're actually trying to achieve? And then within that framework, does it matter how much garage space there is or for that matter, how many rooms are in it? Bedrooms I get, because you're limiting a, a two bedroom means that you would have two tenants. You know, if you had three or four bedrooms, you could have more tenants and their arguments about space and traffic and everything else, but it should be a matter of if we're defining the footprint, whatever you're doing within that.
Well, I think like Stephen says, that when the number's higher, you, the classic thing is, is that cases where there's been a development approved or a building approved and there's a limit on the number of bedrooms in the, in each unit, you know, oh, that, that's a library. Oh, that, you have all of these other rooms that, you know, the one time the municipality has to make a judgment about it is when the certificate of occupancy is, is sought. And then after that, their ability to, to have any kind of say or control over it if there were really four bedrooms and what had originally been sought as a two bedroom. Town is, is really going to have a tough time closing them down.
And that's still an issue in this case.
Right. And the thing is, is that the, the easily measurable things like square footage are a break on abuse. So the lower the number would be, the less likely that you are. And, you know, this question of the storage versus not storage is that, you know, people will say, oh, that's just storage and it's not going to count when in fact it's, it gets used for something else that is an expansion of the use.
We had this discussion in the office yesterday. Somebody was using a bedroom as a basement or basement as a bedroom and storage was, didn't have an egress. And we told them that they should remove the bedroom before they sold. They said they didn't need to. The fire marshal came in and told them to tear it down, all the finish.
We've had, we've had a situation in Shelburne where there was a single family home where a garage was essentially converted into a dormitory. I mean, you know, if the garage is, if we're totally neutral to the garage, it, it can come back.
Most towns require a certain amount of parking to either one or two cars depending on, some are one per bedroom, some are two cars period.
So are you guys happy with the two bedroom limit?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I should get into my, I, I don't want to lose the conditional use for detached buildings. The detached, the conditional uses seems like a bad thing if you're the developer, but if you're everybody else, the conditional use is designed to protect everybody. And give them a voice when something is occurring. So I'm not opposed to detached structures. I'm just saying it should be a conditional use.
But every other detached structure that would be an accessory would just be required to follow setbacks. So why should this be? This seems prejudicial to me.
We'd be the only ones, we'd be the only community I'm aware of that would just say everything's permitted. You can put a building on every single lot in, in town.
We do in Westford.
Yeah, but Westford's a rural area and Shelburne is kind of settled communities.
We have, we have a village that's very, you know, that's urban. So, and, and it's, you know, actually that lot coverage and placement is, is determined by form based code there. So it's, but no, we've decided that this is just so important as, as a way to increase affordable housing that we've decided to make it as easy as possible to do it. And I have to say, I, based on the demand, I'm, I am the zoning administrator there. I, I, that's been validated.
I mean, it's certainly in line with what we're trying to achieve with increasing the available housing, particularly on the affordable and workforce side. But conditional versus permitted?
I'm, I don't understand why we're such, in such a yank to develop for people who don't live here and we're not looking out for people that do live here. The people that are in neighborhoods and I tried to make this point, you know, they live in a community, they bought the lot because of the size, because of the, the way the community is laid out and we're willing to just change the zoning and say that they no longer have a say in what their community is going to look like.
The donors are still living there though. I mean, you're, you're increasing.
The owners are still living there, but the character of the area is being changed. Because of us, not because, and it's not like we don't have a lot of lots that are available. And one of the other things that was, I agree with Stephen on the size. I think the size of the unit, 1,200 is good. But the conditional uses is, it only makes sense. I've been doing zoning and planning for like 15 years and I've, I've never seen it be vacated in this, this type of manner. It's literally we're saying, okay, you can, how many houses are there in town? 2,000? So we're, we're saying, okay, 2,000 houses are now permitted. This is, South Burlington isn't even doing this.
If there's space within the existing setback areas which those people could develop on anyway and just, it's not an accessory apartment. Right?
Right.
So I don't understand the difference.
An accessory apartment should, is, is supposed to be affordable, small, unassuming, attached. The language even says that in some towns they want it to be, to look as if it were a single family home. I'd be surprised, we're the only town literally that would do this. South Burlington has a very strict limit. They only allow one bedrooms. They have a height restriction. All of these towns, none of these towns does this. Even Williston, which has a 1,500, has a conditional use for it. They all have conditional uses. And I think it's important to understand that is the protection of everybody is the conditional use to give them an opportunity. They're not, we're not saying you can't build it. We're just saying build it in a manner that is you know, less aggressive towards the neighbor than it is towards the resident.
So by making it a conditional use, you're, you're forcing the process to go through a DRB review that would give neighbors who don't want things in their backyard or their neighborhood to change.
Accessory uses if it's.
Not to say that's a bad thing, but that's.
That's true, yeah. And effectively, yeah, effectively, yeah.
Right.
Gives them a voice.
But unless there's a standard in the regulations, if a neighbor came and said, I just don't like the idea, they have an opportunity to get the idea, that thought off their chest, but the DRB can't deny it.
Could overrule them, sure.
Well, there would be no basis to over, to, to deny the request.
Right.
There's, unless there was a condition that you wrote into the regs, which I don't think would survive, which is that, you know, one conditional use criterion is the approval of the neighbors. I mean, that, you could make that, you could try to make that.
Yeah, but if you had a, if you have a 100 foot lot and your house is on the corner here and you say, oh, I want to put this accessory use over here on the other lot line, you're impacting the neighbor more than you're impacting yourself.
But you still have to work within the existing setbacks. And if you wanted to build a shed or something that is not an accessory apartment, you could still do that, right?
Yeah, I'm just, I just think it changes the character of all neighborhoods.
Any, any.
And I don't, I don't think, I don't think a lot of people would be happy about it. If you put in a a 1,200 foot two bedroom house next to someone and it drives them out of the neighborhood, they don't want to live there anymore.
So this.
Is that fair to them?
This all just seems to me.
Well, I could throw a ton of scenarios out right now that.
I know you could, I know you could. But these are supposed to be accessory apartments and they started out as one bedroom attached apartments. And that, and in my mind, by expanding it to two bedrooms, we're, we're advancing the idea of more affordable housing. Why does it have to be a separate house? Why are we?
Why does it have to be attached though? Why?
I can see if it's a larger lot.
If you have a, a 3,000 square foot house and you're going to put an addition of 1,500 square foot onto it, you're going to have a five, 4,500 square foot house, all of a sudden on this lot.
I'm not saying you can't do it. Just get the conditional permit.
Well, why don't we make that addition of that 1,500 square feet onto the existing house a conditional use as well then by the same token? Why is it any more heinous to build a separate cute little structure over here and keep it, keep two smallish houses
I just, I'm not a big.
In the neighbor, in the neighborhood, instead of building a big behemoth that's out of sync with the rest of the neighborhood.
I'm not in favor of going from rural to urban. I'm not in favor of infill. I just don't think it's a good idea for.
Well, it's a good thing to know, to understand. Because, I mean, when you're talking about there are other lots that could be built on, but that gets away from the idea of using the land that we have and developing compactly and.
But I'm not saying that. I'm actually encouraging, you know, when we look at the, what we've just been working in the rural area, we're trying to get away from this very thing. We're going to, we've, I noticed that's also included. It wasn't, originally it was going to be in the sewer service area. But it's beside the, I, I don't care as long as it's a conditional use in the rural area.
I'm curious because a lot of the, and we could do a straw poll or something, because I'm, one of the, one of the factors that went into this discussion in the first place was, I believe, was streamlining approval processes and alleviating some of the pressures from the DRB itself. And I'm.
So one of the things is we've also got another protection in addition to setbacks is lot coverage rules. And so, you know, there's going to be real limitations based on the lot that you have in terms of where this thing can be located. So if the problem is you just don't want, you don't like the idea of extra density and people, you know,
No, I don't mind the extra density.
newcomers coming in and living there. I just, I don't, to me, that's just, that's just not.
I just find it interesting that I look at all the other communities and none of them are doing this, none of them.
So let's be the first.
Right now, Burlington, I talked to Mary O'Neil, one of the principal planners in Burlington, and they're rewriting their accessory apartment regulations right now. And they're getting advice from SITO. This is the Committee on Economic Development. As far as, you know, rewriting the regs because they're finding that, that their regs are, are antiquated and need to be updated to reflect what, how they want their community to grow. They're, they're not trying to stay, you know, stay the same. They're saying that there's a positive way to, to support positive growth. And, and they're, they're looking for a way to do that. Just because South Burlington or Winewski or wherever doesn't, doesn't have this. That's not a reason for us not to do it. But to go back to like the preference, it's a preference thing that you're, you're proposing. You're proposing a design review kind of thing on, on the regulations to say that an additional building that's small, that's within the regulations and within the setbacks, coverage, all that stuff, is an uglier building than an attached building. I can show you a million
Saying that at all.
Houses that have been added on a million times and the, the assembly of the whole thing looks just terrible because what somebody is trying to do with an accessory apartment is they're trying to get somebody else to live there. to get somebody else to live there, not necessarily their family, and even if it is their family member, they may not want to give their family member a hug every time they cross paths when they come out the door. So, odds are, they're going to want a little bit of privacy, they're going to want some, some independence from that other person. And if they always have this wall that's going to transmit sound and noise and, you know, all that stuff, smell, whatever, then we're not encouraging them to, to do this accessory apartment. We're discouraging, because there are only certain people that really, like, are desperately having to, if they have another option that may be looking better, that they'll, they'll choose that.
I don't see the community coming out and asking for this. I haven't heard anyone ever.
Well, haven't we asked them? Perhaps we should ask them.
Yeah.
No?
Well, no, they're, they can have an accessory. Everyone knows you're entitled to an accessory apartment.
Well, but there may be some pent-up demand for accessory dwelling units in separate structures. We don't know this.
I thought we were going to tweak this. I didn't realize we were going to redesign the whole zoning picture. And I, you're not going to change my minds, I would suggest that we continue it.
No, that's fair. That's why I was going to suggest we could just do a straw poll, and I, I want to make sure we have the discussion. Some of the things that I heard seem to run a little bit counter to what we were discussing during future land use and housing and that sort of thing that went into our plan, in terms of being able to leverage infill and really encouraging the additional growth in ways that are sustainable and don't just put a house on every plot. Which is my concern, and what I was hearing throughout a lot of those debates. The, the classic, take the rural area, carve it up into five-acre spots and put a house on it, and what does that look like? You know, it's going to completely transform the landscape. In this case, you're, you're taking existing plots where you could add an accessory building on it, still following all of the, the rules that would need to be followed in terms of setbacks.
I think if there were, if it were better thought out, smaller lots, I don't think should be looking at multiple units, even if they do fit. There should be some kind of encouragement to have the houses attached.
So, we do, can we agree that we do?
What would be a smaller lot, like what's your?
A quarter-acre lot. I think a quarter-acre lot with a, a second house on it. I mean, we downzoned.
An accessory building, small, right?
Half the size of the original.
Half the size of the current structure.
Well, depending on some of the lots, I think.
It could be over the top of a garage.
A detached garage would be adorable. That's the classic way that that's done. I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should take some time and look at some of their great examples of these, that we can get an idea. And then, and then, actually, I would be in favor of putting that on front porch forum if we're discussing this. Get a, get some, get a poll from.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be opposed at all to that.
Okay, get a poll. You, you know, you say that you speak for a number of people in the town. I believe that the, there's more demand for these things, that, and that's important that that get represented, too.
I think one of the big things that, that you guys have done is to increase the size of the one-bedroom. That's, that was, I think, an important aspect of it. I also had an idea that the very large homes that want to do an accessory in an interior basis should have, be able to put, you know, decree, if someone's got 6,000 square feet, and they want to build a 2,000-foot apartment in, inside without expanding the structure, they should be allowed to do that as well.
Then that's more like a duplex.
Well, it is, but it's not expanding the structure.
What if they build it with the intent of doing that?
Well, maybe it should be smaller. I, I don't know. It should still be allowed, doesn't it? There should be a bonus for not expanding outside the house, if they don't, particularly if they have a large house. Maybe it is 1,500 feet.
That, that could create a really complicated kind of zoning regulation.
As opposed to having an extra building outside it? It's the same thing.
A zoning regulation to say, you know, if you, above a certain acreage or whatever. But to get back to your point where people don't, you say people don't want it.
I don't, no, I'm saying, I haven't heard anybody talking about it.
We have a housing subcommittee.
Right.
They're talking about it. They're requesting it. They're representing the housing interests of the town. They're not voted in.
I'm saying they're not representing everybody.
You can't please all the people all the time, right?
But, no, a lot of what you're doing, a lot of what you're doing, I agree with. I'm just talking about giving people some say about what happens on their lot lines. That's all I'm asking, that's all I'm talking about.
But you're creating.
I'm not creating anything, Stephen. We've had a conditional use here for.
You're creating a, a work for the DRB.
No, not.
That then has to air that as, on a public forum, hear the neighbors complain or whatever, and then still approve it, because it.
So, you don't think the neighbors should be allowed to complain?
They can complain, but, but what's the DRB to do?
Well, they can complain if somebody has a permitted use and comes in and lays out the lot, and they don't have any, they should at least have some say, and perhaps they can influence how the structure will be placed. That's all, they're entitled to have a little bit of say. We're changing what can happen. We're changing this piece of land.
That's not the DRB's job.
It's our job.
That's, we're, our job is to, to help to set policy, and then the DRB is to enact it.
But it's, yeah, but it's, it's not.
Or enforce it.
I think, I think the problem that I'm having is that I'm just, I'm seeing too many, too much crosstalk in the, in the argument. Because effectively, by making it conditional, it does, it does put a lot more volume on the DRB, but it doesn't give the DRB an ability to say, "No."
Well, we can change the process for accessory houses if we wanted to. We could make it a one-step process. Isn't that a possibility, Dean?
One-step process is normally.
As opposed to, what's the regular conditional use now? Is it one meeting?
Yeah.
So, then, I wasn't sure if it was the same as a.
No, it would be, if it's a conditional use, it requires a, you know, a, a larger check and going to a hearing and then waiting for the written decision.
So, it's a simple process, then? It's not as, I was thinking it was a multi.
Well, and, and I know we've spent a lot of time on this, way more than we planned, and I, and I think it's good, because I, I do want to make sure that your concerns are understood. I'm still stuck on, first procedurally, the idea tonight was that we were going to talk about this, find that we have support so that in the next, in our next meeting, we could, what? Make the change.
Well, you could, if you, if there was consensus tonight, you could say, "Well, have the materials ready at the next meeting to warn a hearing."
Right, right.
That's what you could do.
So, we.
But you may not be there.
So, we could do that. We may not be there. But I, I think what I'm, what I'm really hearing is that, I, I still feel like all we're doing is we're adding workload to the DRB that puts them in a position of still having to make, still having to approve something that neighbors might object to, because you can't just not approve something because of subjective, like, just reasons that are outside of the rules that we have. Like, if, if they still have to follow setbacks, and they say, "All of, all of the things that could be done today with another outbuilding of some sort," like, it, it still has to follow all of these rules. So, the, what the DRB would really be hearing would be the exceptions where you do have angry neighbors, and those neighbors could be angry, but if it's not in violation of a setback or anything else, does it?
It doesn't mean they're angry, just because they want to protect their, some aspect of their property. It's the right that they have now that we're, we're removing from them.
But a neighbor couldn't build beyond the current setbacks today, correct? Or, I mean, they could. They, they could build within their setbacks on their property that they own anyway, regardless of whether or not a neighbor likes it.
Well, you can't build a second structure at this point in time. This is something we're creating. You can't put a separate house on a lot unless it's, unless it's legally.
So, accessory apartments are basically not seen as the same as a, as a home, as a single-family residence, and so it doesn't run counter to the multiple principal structures on a lot. But that's where, I think where you were going with this, is if someone had two separate houses, a single-family and then some other single-family on one lot, you couldn't propose that in Shelburne without going through a PUD. Without going through a PUD process, because you can't have two principal structures on a lot except in PUDs. So, that's not going to happen. It can be allowed as an accessory apartment and a single-family house, because the accessory apartment isn't a principal use, it's an accessory use.
It's a conditional use, isn't it?
Well, it's, it, some of them are accessory uses, when they have two bedrooms and it goes in a new building, and, but not all of them.
Are we building accessory uses today that are freestanding?
Accessory apartments? Are they, well, we're not, we're not seeing a lot of accessory apartments in the last few years, for starters, but could someone put an accessory apartment in a standalone building yet? When's the last time I remember someone doing that? I'm not remembering off the top of my head, but they could do it. And if they, actually, I can think of a guy up in Shelburne Heights, I think he got a permit in a new building. But people can do it different ways. If they come in and get an apartment, or get a permit for a garage, and then they build it, and then they come in for an accessory apartment, if it's a one-bedroom apartment, they've avoided conditional use review.
There's not a date on that.
Not, not a date? No? No, it's an existing, so, I mean, this idea, this, that conditional use will save us from the impacts of a two-bedroom or a new accessory apartment in a, in a separate building doesn't, I don't know that it's real.
I would suggest we.
Well, it just seems to me that we're either, we're either try, you know, serious about trying to increase affordable housing and open to all ideas for how to do it, or, you know, or we're not. We're, we're, we're saying, oh, only in certain places, you know, and, and only under certain conditions. And that just doesn't seem to be in the spirit of what the, the Housing Committee has set out to do, nor in the spirit of what I understood we were trying to do with this. So, you know, making it harder for somebody to do something, that sounds like, you know, Dean's just described a, there are a very convenient back door around, just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
I'd like to hear what the other committees have to say about it, particularly in areas like the Village and Falls, areas that they're, you know, we're talking about protecting.
A building would, if it, if it's in the design review district, a new building would still go through design review. So, if we're talking about.
No, I'm just curious to hear if, what other committees have to think about, to say about this. Before we, I mean, what is the rush? What are, what is the?
Well, Dick, Dean makes a good point. If it's in the Village or Falls district.
I'm, I'm asking why are we?
It still has to go through design review.
I'm not going to vote for it tonight, so we can talk.
There is a mechanism for somebody to, to say something about it. It's called design review in these areas. If it's in rural.
I understand that, Stephen. But I am, I am pretty strong about my feeling about this, so I would suggest that we're not going anywhere this evening that we table it.
I mean, we could. We could still vote, and if we have three to one, we could have materials prepared for next meeting to move forward. What, what I'm trying to flesh out here is, what are the key concerns? And I'm, like, the concerns that I've heard don't seem to solve the problem, and, and I don't know how long.
I don't really see, I guess I don't see the problem in that. I don't see the problem. I don't see that we have a problem. I, I, I think the existing zoning that we have is pretty satisfactory, but I wasn't opposed to adding a second bedroom to that zoning. So, but that's where I stop. I think an accessory, if we're really building accessory apartments affordability, then there's no reason for them not to be pretty much as we, our current zoning stands. So, increasing the size of the, of the one-bedroom is a good idea. Adding a second bedroom, I think that's a good idea. I just don't think it's a good idea to do it without putting some zoning in there and.
So, Dick, and just, I'm trying to understand where the, so what you, what you don't think is a good idea is the two-bedroom detached.
Right.
You're okay with it being a permitted use if it's two-bedroom attached?
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure I had that.
Yeah, and, and I think even having the conditional use at that point encourages that.
Encourages that it be.
Encourages it being attached, right? As a regular, as what we know as accessory apartments. I don't know if.
Why would that be more encouraging? Because people would say, "Oh, if I don't have to get a conditional use and go through the DRB, then I'm going to go this way because it's easier."
Yeah.
You think that's going to be the limiting factor?
I don't know, basically. I honestly don't.
Well, no, I mean, if somebody's motivated to do something, they're going to go through whatever process needs to be done. What we're trying to do is streamline some stuff.
I'm just not in favor of doing what Burlington did in the southeast quadrant by adding, you know, they added 10,000 houses, so now we're going to add 10,000 little houses? Or 2,000 little houses?
No, I mean, now who's jumping ahead?
That's, that's what I'm seeing, is that we're just opening it up, and it's, and, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we can certainly table this and come back to it next week. I, I mean, if.
Are we going to vote? I don't, either way.
All right.
I think what we're, what we're doing, I mean, if we do what you say, Dick, we would be encouraging people to subdivide their lots, so that they could then put whatever they want to on that other lot. What we're trying not to do is, is create the situation where we're encouraging people to subdivide and just have, like, development like South Burlington.
Yeah, and also, I think I'm getting.
South Burlington's not happy with their development. I mean, they've.
I don't care what they think, but.
I know you don't.
We, we don't want that.
I hear you.
We're trying to concentrate the development where it makes sense for it to be.
But what we're concentrating is, in Shelburne is the concentration. There's no delineation, there's no looking at different neighborhoods and seeing how that would affect the neighborhoods. And I've been doing this for too long, I guess. Maybe I've lived here too long, I don't know. But I have, you know, obviously, I have a strong feeling about it, so we can keep going back and forth, see what you can do, telling me things. But I would suggest we move on. Because I'm, I'm pretty.
No, I, I get that, and I'm, I'm still just trying to rationalize this against some of the conversations over the last two years that went into the plan, and that's, that's what I'm really trying to understand, because this doesn't seem consistent with those conversations, and I'm just trying to understand what I'm missing. If it's nothing, I'm happy to just vote, and we can see where things go.
So, as far as voting is concerned, there are, to pass a motion and have it be like another passed motion, you need four, because of the total number of people on this board. So, it's a seven-person board, four must vote in the same way to pass a motion. So, if there's going to be a vote on a question like what you're discussing right now, and it's a three-one, it's a failed motion. That doesn't mean that something still couldn't happen, but understand that if someone was writing the headline, they would have to indicate that the motion failed, because it doesn't have four. But that doesn't mean that I couldn't, you know, if, if something that comes from this is me doing something or Pam doing something, the fact that three of the four feel a certain way may give us enough confidence that, okay, we've got to do something, whatever that is. But if the same four come back at the next meeting after we've done something, and there's really a motion that has to be passed, it's not going to pass if it's the same question with the same people.
Right. Well, I mean, what I'm, what I'm seeing now is that the, the main, i- if we were to vote on this and move it forward, changing the, making it conditional is what would satisfy your main objection, right?
It would. And I think there's, there are details that we need to add to the zoning, such as parking and little things. And I think we should look at what these other communities are doing and take good ideas from them, and add it into our, you know, rather than just doing, you know, this seems pretty basic, but I just feel like, yeah, yeah, that's my main contention, is the conditional use, I think.
But, Dick.
For detached structures.
But in your heart of hearts, you kind of like things the way things are now, right?
I don't object to it. I think that our zoning is comparable to pretty much what everybody else is.
And the reason I ask that question is, is when a board's facing a situation where a member is really happy with a status quo, it's, it requires a reckoning if you're going to try to make some proposal and the person wants the status quo. You just have to acknowledge it. That's what you're working with.
Well, and that's, that's kind of, I mean, I said it the other night at the Select at the Select Board hearing that we, I mean, this board tends to have unanimous decisions, and we're fortunate in that, but that doesn't mean that, it's okay to disagree. That's why we have seven members of a board that fortunately for sure have for.
You know, many times on things that I was outnumbered on. And I went ahead and moved. But I feel pretty strongly about this. I just think we need to do more work on it.
And that's fair, and I hear you. I'm happy to request input from other boards. I'm not sure that that's gonna change anything, which is why I was mostly just curious straw poll where we are. And I would have loved to have had a more full attendance tonight, but, I mean, if it's a matter of, most people are good with making it permitted, then we vote, and that's just how it rolls. But I don't know what it looks like to get feedback from other boards. I mean, we, this is like months from now is when we would be.
Well, I'm not sure, why do we have to do this so quickly as opposed to other things that we-
Why do we have to do anything? This has been a topic we've been talking about for a long time. I think that's where some of these frustrations are coming in.
I am not in favor of delaying this endlessly and, you know, sampling what other places do. I mean, we just move this forward, and you either vote up or you vote down. I mean, I just think this is ridiculous. We've got an affordable housing crisis going on. I mean, you know.
And we do have those concerns that we're addressing in the plan. And that's, I don't, I'm not trying to turn this into a confrontational thing. It's more what I was just debating is saying, like, and this is where I would take a straw poll and input, is that given all of the discussion, and there have been multiple Housing Committee meetings on this, that you and Stephen attended and had input in, and this is where we are now. And now what I'm seeing is, well, let's delay this a little bit longer. And so my suggestion would be to, or my thought, is to ask Dean to prepare materials for motion next week. We'll have hopefully more members. And if there are additional things to come to light to add to that conversation as part of that, then please bring them. But if it's the same arguments, then I think we're gonna be in that same stuck thing. So we just, we just have to vote as a board. But I'm completely open to any materials that you wanna bring or new points that you wanna add when we've got more people. And then we can do a more informed vote. And if we don't have the votes to do it then, then we have to push it back again. But that would be the way that I'm leaning, if anyone else has thoughts.
I agree. That sounds good.
Yeah, let's just, you know, keep moving forward. I'm fine with whatever exhibits, you know, Dick wants to show us.
Yeah, and I really would welcome that. Based on this conversation and what you're hearing, if there's something else that you'd like to add for the next one, then let's talk it through.
All right.
Yeah, and thank you for your time and efforts as well.
And since she's here, I just wanna say again, thank you, Pam, for all of your work on the map.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. The map, you were, it's pretty much done. I got all the maps on there.
I did.
But I haven't done the map.
Yeah, you saw it, I have the window open.
Check it out.
I'll do. Thank you. You too.
See you.
All right, so-
Form-based zoning, do you wanna focus on Kate's memo?
I think that would probably be ideal.
Sure.
There are copies at your desk?
And this, this other one that you added was, oh, these are the-
These are the changes, aren't they?
These are the changes that Brandy did.
So, yeah, putting, you can come back to it later, but at your seats tonight was a copy of, the best thing I have in the way of a Redline version. When Brandy did the work for us on the form-based zoning, she actually kept two documents going. One was the formatted version, and the other one was a more conventional word processing version, but at least that has Redline. So I gave that to you at your desk tonight because it's something I was gonna refer to, but I don't need to do that, and we'll get Kate's memo up. All right. And I sure hope this is the right one. This is it, right? Yeah. Yeah.
So did you wanna run us through it?
Oh, do you want me to sort of start talking about it? Okay, so, yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to kind of reframe things a little bit in terms of what the purpose of pursuing this type of zoning was in the first place. And it was really to try and incentivize redevelopment along Commercial Route Seven North. And the rules were, the regulations were adopted as an overlay ordinance, which is optional to follow. And it came out of a lot of community visioning. So the form-based zoning code that we have enables a pretty visionary transformation. However, it's entirely unimplemented. So why is that? So we had an opportunity in November to present the regulations and get feedback on them at the Vermont Development Corporation. And so this memo that I put together is largely kind of a summary of what we learned from developers, investors, bankers, real estate agents, anybody who might be interested in developing a property on Route Seven. And then just kind of a synthesis of what came out of the comments that received, that we received, and then sort of my attempt at a start to answer the question of where do we go from here? So, as I said, there's been a lot of indifference has been the primary response to the form-based zoning so far. So the takeaways that we got from presenting to bankers and developers and other investors is that it's great that our community supports the corridor's revitalization, but the degree of urban revitalization and redevelopment that we are anticipated happening or have enabled to happen is just not realistic. So, and there are a number of challenges with it. We have, right now, the corridor is made up of a series of, we call them nodes and centers. So there are certain centers in places where we think this makes some sense, where development would be concentrated. And then there would be other areas, the so-called segments, between these nodes of development where the uses would remain the same as they are now, in which case that is very low density or undeveloped, largely undeveloped. So the problem is that in the areas where there are centers, we're calling for a fair amount of commercial usage and active ground floor uses in particular. So, you know, basically what's happened is that we adopted the code in 2016, and then the bottom fell out of the commercial retail market. And so we have, we have like an outdated code. You know, it's just not supported by the demand. And also, we need to, we just need to do a better job of understanding who our potential market is for this. So we got a lot of kind of information on that. And the residential above commercial is a nice idea, but it's very difficult to make this happen in real life. And then the other thing is that Route Seven, while it's, you know, it's technically a complete street, and that is, you know, an asset that we should try to leverage in some way, it's also a very unfriendly pedestrian environment. So we just have to figure out how to get the framework right. And one of the more interesting suggestions was to really just try and focus on maybe one or two areas instead of, I don't know, how many are there now? Dean, how many centers do we have? We had something like, the regulating plan calls for something like five areas or something, centers. I can't, I can't think off the top of my head. But anyway, to really sort of scale it back. And then one of the really interesting things that came out of this was the potential to kind of redevelop with the idea of addressing stormwater, using the corridor as a way to address our stormwater problems, but also to kind of turn this into a business opportunity. And the vehicle for doing that would be the stormwater utility.
Was that, Kate, was that, if there was money going into a stormwater utility, that it could be used for this, for making amenities out of the stormwater? Is that what you mean?
Well, it's almost like a kind of development with storm, it's like the opposite of development with architecture. You would develop instead with stormwater utilities. And maybe the land could have a value for that purpose. So it's theoretically possible, we'd have to do a bit more, get more information on how that could work. But I talked with an engineer at, is it VM, VMD? VMB? Who thought that that might be something that could work if we had a stormwater utility. So, let's see if I can try and explain it better.
So the stormwater utility is sort of a treatment plant incorporated into pools and walkability and parks? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that some of the land, rather than, so we have a situation where we have these outmoded, car-oriented sprawl-type developments, lots of parking lots, lots of impervious pavement, kind of outmoded buildings. They're all reaching the end of their investment life. So how do you incentivize, you know, their reuse and redevelopment? They're, it's not really something anybody wants anymore. So perhaps you could kind of unbuild or unpave and reuse these sites instead for stormwater management in some capacity.
And that would be something that if there were a stormwater utility, then that land could become attractive to them, which could then facilitate purchasing and development, basically.
Yeah, and in doing so, you might create, if these are constructed wetlands or constructed, you know, facilities of some type, you know, that can be very aesthetic. And maybe you might actually in the process create new places that might then incentivize some of the development that you would like to see. Like, you know, who, if somebody is interested maybe in building some apartment complexes or some sort of multifamily-type housing, it would be much more appealing to do that in a sort of park-like setting or adjacent to a park-like setting that just happens to process stormwater than to do it in the way that Route Seven looks like right now, like, you know, with abandoned buildings and parking lots and stuff that have weeds growing out of them. So it's just, it's just a thought on like, how do we, we're not getting the demand that we thought, so we have to sort of rethink this. So how could we rethink this? And that's what I was thinking. What about, this was, this is the one thing that they said, hey, this is an idea that might really work. So how would we start to kind of crack that nut?
Which really does tie into then point five, the, well, an economic development marketer or an economic development committee type thing.
Yes, yes. So we'd need to probably get more information about what sites would offer the greatest potential for something like this. And that maybe we think of redirecting development to a place where we think it makes, there's some potential for it, but maybe look also around it in terms of, are there some sites that could be sort of undeveloped to turn this into an area that might be more inviting for somebody to come in and redevelop? Because it's kind of, in undeveloping some adjacent parcels around it for stormwater, I was just thinking as a utility that somebody could get some, a landowner could get some value out of, you might be able to create the conditions in an undifferentiated strip of sprawl development that would be more attractive to somebody. You know, you're kind of almost creating like a big buffer around it. And that might be the way to sort of start, you know? It was just a thought on how we could maybe begin. And, but I do think we would need to, we also really need to market this once we've decided on an approach and what we wanna do. And again, what we'd like there. I mean, maybe we can use some of the existing form-based zoning regulations to inform what that is. Otherwise, we could create a kind of a PUD that could be used in this area. And then we just go out and market it. We have an economic development person that markets it. You know, hey, so-and-so, you're looking to put in a big housing complex? Here you are. We have the spot for you.
Well, and that's sort of the idea in Perry, when he was on the board, had suggested stuff like this. But having an inventory of what properties are available, what the owners of those properties might be looking for. Like, I feel like there's some basic information that we could have that could then be shared in a forum or connections made or something that could then align with these types of-
Well, and if we had some kind of overall game plan or vision, we could meet with property owners. And, you know, there might be some interest in aggregating a whole bunch of small properties together and creating one big thing. I don't know, you know, I mean, there's a million very complicated issues associated with this that have to be worked out. But the bottom line is to expect that we're gonna just get a whole bunch of development here, like, sort of along the lines of what you're seeing in the city center of South Burlington. It's just, it's just not gonna happen. That's what everybody's been saying. So, you know, it's like, okay, well, what else do we do? That's, you know, the alternative is just continues to sort of rot, you know?
Right, right.
I don't know what they're building back there on that street behind the Blue Mall, but they've got tons of building going in there now.
Yeah.
And that road closed all winter, or last fall.
Yeah, yeah, that's not like the heart of their sort of city center. But there's a bunch of stuff that's been happening kind of incrementally along Dorset Street, you know, up near the, where the Trader Joe's and all that is, so.
So you think we should pinpoint a number of lots and focus on those?
I think so. Kind of like make, you know, make an-
Overture.
An overture, like, you know, here's what we've learned is an opportunity. And, I mean, might even make sense for the town to consider hiring, you know, you know, a firm like White and Burke to kind of provide a little bit of guidance on how we might, you know, go about doing this. You know, I don't know, I'm just sort of out of ideas.
I think if nothing else, starting with an economic development committee or something to start the dialogue and get things going makes a lot of sense and sounds like there's support from the Select Board as well.
I think so. And the stormwater thing, I think, is potentially, you know, could be very value-added. Because if you think about it, first of all, we learned from working with Amy that we, there are some lots there that have superb infiltration capacity because they're very sandy. And, you know, it's, these are glacial soils, so it's all kind of hit or miss, depends on what was happening 10,000 years ago. But, you know, it is, the entire Route Seven corridor is a kind of plateau, you know, that, you know, it's what, Dorset Street, Spear Street, Route Seven, the lake, you know? So if you could capture some of the stormwater that is coming from those hills and provide places where it could be cleaned and infiltrated and all of that, I mean, you could have a measurable impact on the lake because, you know, the state came through and did all the work that they did. And, you know, it was an earlier era, and there wasn't, they didn't quite, you know, they created some impacts that, they made things worse. You know, I think that's the general consensus. Not intentionally, but, you know, that's- was the outcome. And we're on the hook as a town for, what is it, you know, eight million and counting or something in liabilities? Well, presumably, a great proportion of those, some proportion of those, which I would imagine would be a large number, relate to, are created by conditions on Route 7, you know? So if we can, might, might help all of our, our, you know, our tax burden if we can incentivize some way to increase our resiliency. If we can't attract commercial development to offset it by having expanded grand lists to get the new taxes, then we can at least attack it this way. And the other thing I was thinking was that it could be kind of even cool and maybe part of sort of like our, hey, you've arrived in Shelburne, you know, because of course no one, you know, that's, that's another problem, right? The arrival experience. And we could actually put some of our, you know, net meter devices and arrays and, and some of the cool new wind stuff that, I mean, was talking about. And that could be part of our brand, particularly if we had, maybe if we convinced the museum to work with us on, you know, how do we turn this into a kind of cool public art thing?
Can I ask you a kitted question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, it sounds like you're reacting a lot to the lack of a commercial market, commercial real estate market?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there's, there's a lot of potential for housing here.
That's where I was going, is, is it, it sounds like a lot of what you're saying is in reaction to this, this situation that we face with the declining commercial market. Retail is, is just changing forever. But you didn't talk about the residential side. Some of the news that I would share is that in terms of inquiries and form-based zoning, the action is with residential.
Yeah.
And actually, the next meeting of the Housing Subcommittee will include a discussion about a property in the Route 7 corridor for which a sketch plan proposal has been based that capitalizes on form-based zoning, that's 44 units.
Woo, that's great!
You know, and then there are other, and, and that's kind of public because that's, that plan was submitted by Ron Bouchard, who's been having conversations with the Williams who own the property, the island that is surrounded on one side, on the west side by Route 7, but the old Route 7 or Webster Road with a copy tech, some people know of it as the copy tech lot. But other, other inquiries that I can't really share are coming in. So you never can be sure that the thing that you've, you know, you've said isn't gonna happen doesn't come walking in the door. But, you know, what I'm sensing is that there has always been residential potential. We may start to see that realized. Is it, is it dangerous to change the course when if you stay with, stay the course, you get the residential, which if it builds out, then provides the market for the commercial that isn't going to be there without the residences? I mean, is it a matter of timing?
It might be, although it just does seem like the commercial part of this is, is already antiquated. I mean, I, I'd like to have somebody who knows more about that take another look at it. I mean, the part of commercial that's doing just fine are, you know, like local services, particularly restaurants and, you know, that kind of stuff. But the problem is getting a developer to build, you know, a structure that would have commercial below and then residents above.
Residential above, right.
That's, that's where I think we need to kind of rethink, like, how...
It's hard to do at a small scale, but if there were a lot more residential units in the corridor, the scale might bump up and it could actually be sustainable.
I, I, I mean, what I'm thinking is we should go with a more, try to emphasize not you must do this, but you, you could do this, you may do this, you could do this. We'd like to encourage you to do this, but, but you don't have to, you know?
But in a way that's not the optional form-based zoning?
Well, it's, I think in these kinds of settings, though, you know, flex, flexibility is, is key. I mean, there are just so many, from a developer's standpoint, there are just so many, they have, they have an, not an unlimited, but they have many options in terms of where they want to invest their money, right? So there are many, many opportunity costs, let's say, to deciding to invest their money in a project on Route 7. So we want to make it as easy as possible, you know, to attract that. And I think that right now, we're, that was some of the feedback we got, was that it's, it's, it's too onerous. It, it's, we're not incentivizing it enough. So how do we incentivize that? You know, maybe we can think more expansively about the stormwater component and how that might actually create the conditions that incentivize more housing to come here, which everybody seems to think, and, and reality seems to be bearing this out, is reasonable to assume would happen. And, but on the commercial side, you know, maybe be more flexible about how we go about trying to accommodate that or attract it.
And is a simple way of expressing that just removing the requirement of active ground floor? I mean, I'm trying to get, I'm trying to get my head around all of this and is it that there are a couple of kind of easy marks? Because, you know, everybody wants it to be easier.
So one of the things that, in the form-based code things that I've attended, one of the really interesting things about where the active ground floor thing happens is that they require, so you, there's a, a, a structure is built and it's required to be built so that it could have a second or third story at some point in the future. Doesn't have to happen right at the time. Or it starts off as, it's gonna be a shop, but it has to have a cer, a high ceiling. Like, I can't think of exactly what the height would be, but something like, you know, 12 feet, 16 feet or something like that. And the idea is that that allows it to become converted into housing at some point. Because how, commercial uses, you want to have them ideally be right flush with the street, right? Like, make it as easy as possible for people to come in. But then if you have housing, I mean, you want, it's, it's nice in that situation. Think of a townhouse, right? There are steps that go up to it, you know, there, that's for a reason, right? You're creating this threshold, this privacy, right, to, to go into a different kind of, of space. And so that can be modified. You, you put in a false floor and add some steps to it, and presto, this thing that was a shop has now become, you know, a residence. So that's some of the interesting stuff that, you know, is being done in other places.
It's interesting, is the Farrow rebuild is almost exactly what we're trying to do, the building up by McDonald's. Except they've got a little bit more elevation than we allow. Maybe stepping up a little bit higher.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I've been watching that. That's, that's, it's interesting to watch it start to sort of trickle, you know, south. I'm like, come on.
They have, I don't know if they're advertising, I don't know how much they have.
Yeah.
And I don't think they cover any more ground than what was there before. Yet they, they seem to have everything that was there plus commercial.
Yeah. And it's a lot nicer quality than the stuff that they put, which I'm very gratified to see, than the stuff they put in Essex Junction, which is very, yeah, much, much higher quality. I don't know what, who did that. Yeah, that was, that was just...
So as all of this relates to form-based zoning and, and this discussion, I, what I've been trying to do in discussions with Dean is figuring out, all right, so we have the plan going through its approval process, and once that gets approved, then we can really dig into work plans and chatting with the select board about priorities and that sort of thing. This was a great topic in the meantime, because we had done a lot of work on it until we basically tabled it to get into the plan work. What keep coming, what keeps seeming to come up is a lot of things that could influence how this goes. And so I almost, I hesitate to get too deep into the details of form-based zoning as it exists, even with the, the updates, because we're asking a lot of questions that we probably want some kind of answers to or have an idea of where these nodes could be that, because that may change whatever it is that we get into changing in the form-based code language. And the thing that keeps coming back is that, like, an economic development subcommittee sort of thing. And following some of the state legislature proceedings, I mean, it seems like, well, all right, not finding a solution, create a committee, and then four years from now, maybe we'll see a report that they did or didn't do. So I want to make sure that it's something that would actually be accomplishing of things. I, I don't know if there's an appetite for just creating a new committee, if that's something that would need to come out of the select board, or if that's something that can be a sub of planning commission or how that needs to work.
We can create an ad hoc committee, I think.
Because I, I mean, does that, I, I'm mostly saying this out loud just to see what resonates, because to me, that's what keeps coming to the top.
I would love to, now that I've had a chance to kind of digest some of the stuff from the conference and then started to come up with my own sort of reactions to it, I'd love to talk to some folks in town, you know, who, and just, who do this for a living and see what sticks on the wall, you know, like, at this point. Like, well, what do you think if we did this? And how could we do this? You know, like, what, what, we only had 75 minutes at that presentation, and I, I had to present the whole plan, and then we broke into groups. So, you know, we, we didn't have a lot of time. But I think to create a kind of ad hoc committee of people who have a vested interest in this town in making this into a productive place would be great. You know, like, these are the regulations we have, this is the information we've gotten about them, this is what we know about them. And so how do we make this something that, you know, these, how do we turn these into something that could be effective? You know, what would make you or somebody that you know want to invest here?
And, and that's where I keep coming back to mentally is, I mean, what can we do that moves things forward? Because I, I don't, I don't want to just get lost in discussions that lose sight of a greater purpose or are dependent on these greater purpose discussions that we're having.
So that's why, that's why I think the ad hoc committee that is a kind of, you know, it might be involve, you know, design, people who have some design aptitude can kind of translate some of this into, is this what you mean? But also, but most importantly, you know, the business, economic development, and then probably somebody from the Housing Committee, maybe Ron Bouchard would, would have time to just, you know, weigh in on that and then kind of look at it through that lens. Be very, very focused as we're trying to make this an economically productive place. Because that's really, that's been what we've been trying to do since 2010. And so, you know, the form-based code was the method that we decided upon through the Planning Commission to try and create better rules for building, to try and get better built outcomes.
Yeah.
And so I think, you know, we made, we made some good headway that way, and we've, it's something that I think is on at least many people's radar screen in the community, and they generally support it, and that's great. But I think we have to sort of go back to the drawing board at this point, because we've created something that is not, doesn't seem to be very effective. Unless, Dean, you are anticipating just a flood of applications for housing projects?
That's at least two, isn't it? Is that one that you showed us last meeting, still going? The one up on the west side?
Well, Clint is going to be building his project.
So it is going through?
Yeah, as, as far as I know, he's planning to. I do think that things are, you know, anything's possible, but then again, projects could fall through the cracks. I don't believe that the status quo is, is what you want to do. I think that Brandy came up with a good set of improvements to the document that would help us regardless. So if I could wave a magic wand and make those things take effect, I think that developers would like it because they would make things clearer, they would address the situation that is ambiguous for now, which is what happens when someone's got an existing approval and they want to do some form-based zoning elsewhere on the, the site. It would do some things that I think that you and others like, which is to set some of the stormwater as the default rather than the alternative and make the person argue for the alternative rather than for the storm, the stormwater oriented. So I think it's got a lot of good things in it. And it's just kind of too bad that we can't kind of go presto and make them the default, right? It's because I think people would respond favorably to it.
Maybe it's a divide and conquer thing. I mean, maybe that's the path that the Planning Commission stays on, is going through the changes that Brandy had and moving that forward to get that updated in form-based zoning. And then in parallel to that, work on forming an economic development committee to get that dialogue going and just see who we can get. And I don't know if that starts with some informal discussions. I don't know if we carve out some time during a planning commission to invite people to provide comments. I, I feel like there might be less of a response to that, just gut feel.
Yeah.
Hey, you should just read through this. See how much damage we can do.
You don't remember from two years ago?
No, I don't. I didn't take the changes. I haven't read the changes yet.
Right.
Yeah, these changes got...
Sorry?
These are Brandy's changes.
Those are, well, so understand that she had two, she unfortunately had to burn resources to keep these two separate documents going. And then in the end, the redline version kind of fell away. So it doesn't, it doesn't go all the way to the end. But I think in terms of newer members getting their heads around the kinds of things that she did, that redline version will do a lot for you.
Much easier to read online than...
It's, it's easier to get...
Because it's redline.
Well, and as I said in my note, I'm trying, you know, I can, I could spend like, you know, $60 to give each of you one of these, and, and then I can blast out the black and white and hope that you look at it online. You know, as I went through the redline version again, I saw some places that I thought, that, that got flagged, you know, like, ooh, do we really want to keep up the idea of residential over retail? Well, that could be a conversation that you have, but I think overall, what she did is a vast improvement, and it would be great to just, like I said, presto change it. But you guys who are new to it will have to, you're the main person.
Residential over retail could make a lot of sense if it were wedded perhaps like to stormwater, you know? So where the smaller footprint starts to become something that is baked in.
Yeah.
And we incentivize that.
Yeah. So in terms of, you said five, is that, what I was trying to remember is the, the frontage zones, and there are three frontage zones. Those are the areas that show up on this map as kind of the brick color along the, on Long Route 7. So you've got one down in the vicinity of Long Meadow, you got this one, and this, other two are basically on the northern end. So that requirement of residential over commercial really is kicking in in a fairly limited area, fairly limited geography.
To reduce parking as well, to single, you know, single parking, which would reduce lot of coverage. I mean, that's what Burlington does now, they build without parking.
So...
It's amazing that Burlington does that. It's really great. I mean, you could put a bar in there that requires zero parking.
Yeah.
Well, which is great to do if you've got a compact area with lots of public transportation and easy to walk around, but a seven-mile stretch of Route 7, or whatever it is.
Almost like you said, it's kind of working this way, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think it's gonna go faster, because I do think that areas like South Burlington are pretty well built up.
Yeah.
Well, and they've got their, their interim zoning moratorium thing.
That's mostly residential, I think.
On housing, yeah.
Well, so noting the time, and, I mean, the fact that we have these materials and now we have this redline, should we save this for...
Maybe just go through, everybody go through the redline and, and just come up with, I mean, I could, I could certainly go through that and then do a, you know, back and forth with this to see how this lines up.
My suggestion would be, is just review this list that generalizes the kinds of things that Brandy did, and then go through the redline, try to do it quickly. Don't, you know, don't make yourself slow down. But then, you know, allow yourself to say, oh, well, that's an example of that kind of thing. And, and then you begin to get the rhythm of the kinds of changes that she made. the rhythm of the kinds of changes that she made. There's a lot of stuff that it's, you know, it's moved completely. So you'll just blast through paragraphs, it's 70 pages or whatever, but you'll go through it fairly quickly when you recognize that. But it's really to just get more, you know, get your head back in it, if it's been two years or for the first time. And then...
So if we move forward with that as the next steps for the planning commission, and then, I, I don't know if we want to discuss next time, or check in with Lee and the select board around economic development commission committee concept?
I do think you want to connect with them, because they, they've made it seem like that's something they, or at least some members historically have said they want to have their finger on. But for me, the most important thing is to know when your next two meetings are going to be.
And now, I was gonna say, if we're good with that as next steps, then the segue into the...
Schedule?
Yeah.
So does it look like 7th and 21st? I mean, I can pull up what the results of the poll were.
The, yeah, I mean, those certainly work for me. And I think, and we had quorums on those dates, right?
You have five, yeah, you have...
Five on one of them? And also to say out loud, if it hadn't been mentioned more widely, that Asim is going to pull back, because he has some...
Acquises.
No, he actually has some work with the UN that's gonna take him away for a lot of time, and...
Oh, shoot. Well, he's probably, you know, saving the planet from climate change, so it's more important, but...
There are worse problems to have.
I know. Darn.
But, but yeah, so that, that seat is opening up.
Oh, shoot, okay.
So your bigger numbers are on the 7th instead of, and the 21st. So if you, you basically shifted your 14th and 28th meetings ahead one week each, we're lucky that we have an extra Thursday. So it's not next week, it's actually two weeks, but it's gonna be the first Thursday of the month.
I think this, the 7th and 21st seem to make sense, and that also, I mean, maybe not good for Andrew's attendance, but...
Right.
At least, yeah, some, some consistent across, some consistence across the topic between those two dates.
And we did get the, this room back, so we...
Good, good.
We can be in here if that's what you'd wanted to do. So if the decision is, I will send the, if we were to V-CAM...
So one thing that I would love to try and do if we go with this economic development committee, is to take a really holistic look at the town, and, and to not separate out Route 7 north from the Village and Route 7 south, but just really...
I think you should start with just a step-back broad discussion, and then narrow it down based on what tools we have and what areas there are.
Yeah, but it would be nice if, because one of the points of doing the form-based zoning, too, is to try and find a way to sort of architecturally integrate Route 7 a bit better than, into the town than it is. So right now, it's just this sort of eyesore that we share with South Burlington, you know? I mean, that's how it's really perceived. So I think maybe thinking of it as, you know, part and parcel with, you know, there are many places that Shelburne offers for, you know, commercial enterprise, you know, and we have different settings for that. And, you know, this is just one of, one of, a different setting. And that might also help to focus our attention on finding ways to, if we see it as part of a whole, to, to improve it, you know?
Maybe approach the SBA, too, to see if they've...
They're interested, for sure.
Yeah, you know, so...
Maybe have some people that they want to insert into that committee.
Yeah.
I am sure they might. Yeah, they've expressed interest in a lot of things recently, so that would be good. Are we good, 7th and 21st? Are we, we're all good?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess so.
Does that work for you?
I might have to...
Is that, we'll try to be clear. And, and as far as checking in with the select board, is that something you or I should just send a note, or just to...
I would say yes. Trying to think of the best way to do it. Yeah, touch base with Lee. Just ask what he thinks.
Okay. All right. And then, was there, so I, I think in conversation, we updated on the select board hearing, there was no real discussion. Is there any other business or anything to approach?
Not that I needed to cover.
All right.
You mentioned Asim, and I'm not sure if there's been a message posted on Front Porch Forum soliciting people, but if you know people, encourage them to get their letter in to the select board if they want to be considered.
Yeah, and he had made a suggestion as well, that, yeah, that...
Well, I see, right, I see, and I don't know if she has submitted yet.
Right, right.
Oh, there was somebody who was interested?
Well, he was suggesting that, his wife.
Oh!
Who actually has a planning background.
Perfect! Oh, that's great. Oh, that would, she'd be a catch.
Couldn't work out very well.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Does she know that he was suggesting her?
I was just thinking, I don't know. Yeah, surprise.
I went after your wife a few years ago. Full court press on her, but she declined.
Good try. Then I would take a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Oh, well, no, I can't.
I move.
Moved by Stephen, seconded by Dick. All right, adjourned.